All right, everyone, welcome to the Monday, January 7th, 2019 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all here with us. Seems like a year ago, like last year that we last met. But, so anyway, welcome. We're glad you're here with us. We've got a pretty full agenda, and I understand there's a football game on tonight, which we're going to try to do what we can to catch a little bit of it for some of us here. But why don't we go ahead and get started? I know our first item is the Affordable Living Policy with the Affordable Housing Working Group. Do you have anything to say?
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dana Lewis and the Chair of the Task Force, the Affordable Living Task Force, Mr. Craig Chaney, and then we'll give the report to you tonight.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Appreciate your good work today.
Good evening. Dana Lewis, Housing Program Analyst. I'm going to let Craig Chaney, who is the Chair of our Affordable Housing, I mean Affordable Living Policy, give the report because he's going to talk about how the group met, put all our information together. The last time we came to council, you all asked us to meet, send the policy out to boards and commissions to get feedback, and we have done that. All of the comments are attached, and Craig is going to give you a summary.
Great. Thanks for having me back. I think the good news is that we got very, very positive comments from all of the boards and commissions, and we appreciate all their time in writing it and thinking through it. That being said, as usual, there were some new ideas and some new thoughts that are summarized in the staff report, and I was just going to highlight a few of them. An awful lot of the things that were suggested, I think, were good ones, and I think they're available or doable in the scope and the way the policy is written because we tried to be, provide a lot of flexibility for trade-offs among different kinds of units and different circumstances of units versus money. And so all that language we intended that would be in there, and there would be circumstances where one was more appropriate than the other. So I think a number of the boards and commissions highlighted certain circumstances that they thought were important for you to consider. So I would, hopefully, you would see those and take those into account as projects come forward. There were a couple of comments that I will just highlight so that the boards and commissions know that they were heard. There was still some discussion about the threshold of units. You recall that we had a discussion last time about the 6 percent or a target of 6 percent or more than 6 percent. We have not gone back and changed the language, but I would call your attention to the fact that the Housing Commission and HSAAC certainly recommended that the percentage be higher. I think the way it's written, there is the possibility on a case-by-case basis for a target to be higher. So I would say that that's, you know, yes, I would endorse that personally, and I think the work group would. But I think that's possible in the policy as it's written today, so we did not make any change to that language. The other two items that were put forward, and both good ideas and just, I'm not quite sure where to deal with them. One was the idea of a bonus density that the, I believe it was the EDA suggested. I certainly think the idea of a bonus density for more units is really personally an agreeable one to me. I think that's more of a land use, special exception, negotiation-type thing rather than something that would go in to this policy. So again, I guess we didn't make a change, but I would call your attention to it and say, great idea, think about it if the opportunity comes up. Obviously, the whole circumstance and the trade-offs have to work, and depending on where the building was and what the development looked like. But it's certainly something that I wanted to call your attention to. The other one was the Environmental Sustainability Council. They had quite a debate, and they provided really excellent, thorough written comments on the back and forth between whether affordable units should be lead and all that. We did not discuss that, I'll be honest with you, in the work group. And I guess my take on it is, thank you for raising the issue. Were affordable units to be part of a bigger development with non-affordable units as there, the whole lead discussion would obviously be happening anyway. So obviously, the affordable units would benefit from that same level of lead certification and environmental conditions. If we were so lucky to get a standalone affordable unit building in the city, I think it would be a great conversation to have. And at that point, we, I think we'd all win because we would be having a dedicated affordable building, and I think at that point, we could all pretty much figure out how to come to a good conclusion around how environmentally sustainable and what the cost trade-offs are, et cetera. But I would love to have the circumstance where we have that debate in this city if we ever get there. So again, I think the thanks to the Sustainability Council for raising the issue. We did not make a change in the policy regarding that because we felt like in some respects it would carry along with the development that the affordable units were in. And in other cases, it would be a wonderful circumstance to have that debate publicly about how sustainable the dedicated building or, you know, the standalone building for affordable units would be. So anyway, those are the main comments that I think I would highlight. And Dana's going to point out another comment that, the Planning Commission, one other comment that I think is doable, and it's online, 46 and 47 of the staff report. I would argue it's doable with the flexible language that we included, but the Planning Commission asks that we consider developments with no amenities or reductions in parking minimums in order to reduce development costs. So I think, again, I just call your attention to that, that perhaps there wouldn't be the same threshold of parking requirements were we to have a standalone building. We might get more affordable units out of it. So again, I would just call your attention to that. Dana, did I leave anything else out that I should highlight?
No.
Okay. So with that, I will happily take questions. I think at this point, I would hope that this is ready for finalization, whatever the next step in your process is. I think that's it. But again, I would emphasize that we got, you know, a lot of support across the board. No one really raised questions about it, and I think we're getting very close to hopefully being ready to put this in place and update the 2013 policy.
All right. Thank you for the fine work you all have done. You've certainly made a lot of progress over these past months, and we greatly appreciate it. Before we take any questions, I wonder if we could just open it up to Mr. Shields and see if you had any thoughts or comments about the product as of course.
The, I appreciate the request. The, if council will recall, there was a review by the city attorney early on in this process, and I think there was work back and forth with the task force and the city attorney on some of the provisions. And I believe that that is reflected in this draft. The only other note I would just make from a perspective of, you know, this is obviously the council's decision. At line 86, there's the language about tangible support for affordable living. And the council, you know, as you're working through policy, through the comprehensive plan or through a policy statement like this, typically, the language would read something to the, akin to the city council shall consider dedicated sustainable annual revenue with each annual budget, or have it be a bit more of a foundation for future council consideration. And this would set forth a policy basis for those future decisions. It would be a little bit unusual for a policy statement like this to have an imperative like this. There's also, I think, just the technical point that this council can't bind future councils, and this language with the word "shall" in it does have that effect of effectively binding future councils to having that tangible financial support. So I just note that that is unusual, I think, for a policy document like this. The city attorney is here also. I don't know if she has any comments on this, but, you know, we say that respectfully because we know how, I think, every word in this policy, and know had a magnifying glass on it and had a lot of citizen debate on it, and so I say that with respect for that effort.
So are you saying the last version, the last go at this, instead of saying "shall dedicate," it's something like "shall endeavor to dedicate" or something like that?
If I recall, this is actually fairly familiar, similar to what happened five years ago, where the task force actually recommended that it be a "shall have dedicated funding for affordable housing." And in the council's review of that, that word was then changed to "shall consider on an annual basis."
All right. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions, then? Comments? Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work on this. I know there's lots of debate. So I'll preface my comments by saying that I wholeheartedly support kind of the context behind it and the tenants, and I know there was much debate around the 6 percent or more. So that being said, I would love to see us actually be more ambitious. So not necessarily in the percentage debate, because I know that's been well-vetted with the city attorney, but given the data in front of us, I think we certainly have a crisis with affordable housing. So when I look at the goals, so I actually want to start with the goals as opposed to all the details on the strategy, so it's page five, 141 and beyond, which I think are a little dated because, for example, one of the first lines talks about preserving the current stock of market rate affordable units currently, or actually, six years ago, we had 224 units. We lost about 200 of those. But the target says we're going to preserve 224. Well, we only have 27. So, you know, should the goal actually be, we need to actually claw those back and we actually need to have 200? Or another way of thinking about it, which I think I've raised before, is, you know, we know what our population estimates might be in, say, 2040. So if we know that our population's going to grow to about 20,000, how many housing units do we need in the city? And of those housing units in the city, how many of those need to be affordable? And of those ones that need to be affordable, what sort of composition? Do they need to be two-bedroom units? They need to be a mixture of rentals and condos? But I feel like if we start with more, I guess, realistic and ambitious goals, that will help us work backwards, figure out what those strategies and policies would be. Because I think we'll find that not only do we need to preserve and claw back some of these units, we actually need the Affordable Housing Fund, for example, to be X amount of money. And that, I think, will probably bind future councils, but it will certainly put it very much front and center for future councils to understand that the Affordable Housing Fund needs dedicated revenue. And I think I see in their mention of kind of meals tax, or maybe it was one of the comments from one of the boards and commissions talked about considering new revenue sources like a meals tax that the city of Alexandria did. So I just want to reiterate that point again because I feel like I've mentioned this goal before. I think these goals are probably a bit outdated, and I think we need to be more realistic about what future goals look like and what future housing stock needs are, and from there, work backwards to figure out what affordable housing needs are. Because I think right now, I certainly believe that we have a regional crisis with affordable housing, and I think we need to do our part beyond just preserving units we don't have. And I think the math shows that the 6 percent debate versus six or eight or 10 really doesn't matter because there's no way that the math is going to work out. Even if we had an affordable housing policy that says 15 percent of all new units are going to be affordable, that doesn't get us to where we need to be when we do that math. So I think we need to be a bit more ambitious with what the policy says and maybe outline those policies. Because there's a bunch of good policies sprinkled in there, like the one about the condos, whether those need amenities, talked about the homeownership fund. I think there's a bunch of good strategies in there, but I'd love for us to actually refine the goals so that we can work backwards and actually understand where we need to go as a city, and then therefore what the policy should look at. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just comment quickly. I think the reason for the numbers was to point out the starkness of the challenge. And in 2013, we agreed that we should at least have a census of where we stood, and we could establish a reasonable goal based on that. And obviously, in 2017, 2018, we wanted to re-present the numbers and say, well, we're not changing the goal, but look where we are. In a couple of cases, we're up, and a lot of cases, we're way down.
Yeah.
And a lot of that's market-based. So I think part of the reason for including the table was more of a census approach rather than a specific target goal, per se. It's just to paint the picture. It's where we are.
Yeah. And as from a scorecard perspective, we're certainly not doing very well when you look at that data. But I'd love for this as a kind of going-forward policy to think, oh, well, where do we need to be in the next? Because we know this is not an overnight thing that we can solve. So in the next 20, 30 years, where actually do we think we're going to be? And given that we've updated the rest of our comp plan with a target date of 2040, you know, where do we think we see ourselves as a city in 2040? And I know that we've had a demographer come in to actually look at population projections. Maybe we can use that data to figure out, okay, in 2040, this is the number of housing units we need, and here's what our population makeup's going to look like, how many of those actually need to be affordable. And that gives us actually some targets to work towards.
And my only other comment would be, I don't think you're going to get there at 6 or 8 or 10 percent, as you said.
Yep.
There's going to have to be some dedicated 100 and 200-type units if you're going to make it, if you're going to meet the goal as you stated it. You're going to have a whole different model of how to do this.
Yep. No, and I think that's exactly the conversation we should have in council, so, but thank you.
Thank you. So I think we agree, I at least agree with Ms. Hardy, that we do have an affordable living/housing crisis, and I too would like to see us be more ambitious. You know, many of us, most of us, I think, have attended one or more meetings of your hard-working group, and so I can't remember in my time around a group that is sort of more informed and, I think, more committed to the concept of increasing affordable housing. And yet, you know, we're not getting there. So I take Ms. Hardy's comments as an appeal for some sort of metric, some sort of target, some sort of rubric that we can apply ourselves to, not only us but councils in the future, that is, you know, beyond just the 6, 8, 10 debate, beyond just the language of will or, you know, ought to consider an annual appropriation. You know, I think somehow we need to convey to the community that we have this vision of ourselves as Mayberry, but, you know, the kind of community we actually live in doesn't make room for the deputy sheriff, for the barber, or the person who works at the fuel station. I mean, we simply do not have options for living for a significant part of, you know, what makes up our local economy, and we would like to somehow address that. How do we do that? Well, I mean, I am coming to the realization that the phrase, as projects come forward, you know, we will do whatever it is that we say we're going to do. You know, I'm not sure that a whole lot of new projects are going to come forward at the pace that they've been coming forward in recent years. I think there appears to be coming a sort of natural pause in the development process with the exception of the Upper West Side. But we sort of already set the metrics for, set the numbers for the Upper West Side in terms of affordability. I didn't think personally that they were ambitious enough. So I'm not optimistic that a whole lot of projects are going to come forward that are going to enable us to, you know, catch up to what we've lost. So what do we do about that? Well, as I look through this packet, the area of greatest promise is, you know, can we at least save what we've got? So that's what I would apply my final remarks to here. The fields are mentioned in several instances in the report, and I guess I would like this document to be very clear that we need to have a strategy coming out of, you know, the day after we approve this policy that, you know, secures the fields as an affordable housing development, whether that means, you know, exactly as it is now or some sort of, you know, redeveloped fields that would have more units with more bonus, you know, with bonus density. I don't know exactly what it needs to be, but we need to have, I think, a detailed and serious conversation with the whole community, and particularly the people who live around the fields, about what we're going to do to hold on to those units. And, you know, preferably, if we could, use the land to expand by getting some height. So that would be my one ask, I guess, to come out of this. If the document could just have some very specific place where the things that refer to the fields here and there are pulled together, and the people who vote on this affordable housing policy know that, by gum, I voted for this, and now I better have a way to put some meat on the bones as it relates to the fields.
So as the liaison to this committee, I definitely want to thank Craig and Dana because there were so many people with different opinions in the room, and the fact that you got everything into a document is an amazing thing. There were so many opinions there. And I appreciate that we're going to call the Affordable Living Policy. As I read through it, I was wishing that there was a paragraph at the beginning that said that. This has formerly been called the Affordable Housing Policy, and now we're going to call it the Affordable Living Policy, and here's why. And I didn't see that anywhere. And then as you read through it, it kind of flips back and forth between affordable living and affordable housing, and the words are interchangeable within the policy? And I'm just wondering if there's a way to do a quick go-through and...
We can do another, we can do a final review.
Just a fly-through. Like, it says down here, "living stock," which was instead of "housing stock," but then, anyway, if you would just go through and straighten all those out. But I think a paragraph to explain it makes a lot of sense because if people ask, we have lots of different reasons, but it would be nice to have like two sentences that say, this is why we're calling it affordable living.
We can do another.
And this is what matters. And then related to what Mr. Shields just said about the city council shall dedicate, and I'm totally doing this on the fly based upon what I just heard from two other people. What if it said something like, the city agrees that we need to increase the amount in the Affordable Housing Fund, and these are some of the measures by which that could happen? One, dedicate sustainable annual revenue. Two, developer contributions. Three, work with nonprofits. So it lists a few options, but it has in there the fact that we do value increasing the Affordable Housing Fund. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that work, Mr. Shields, so it's not so prescriptive as a "shall"?
I think it's a good option. Are you finished?
I have one more, but you go ahead. Go ahead.
Sure. I, having tried to get two standalone affordable major developments in the city in my time here and having them both shot down, I think my credit in this space is pretty high. So having said that, I think that we need to redo lines 86 through 89 so that reflects that it becomes an object policy discussion on an annual basis. I don't want to implant anything that centers future discussions on a very narrow band of options. I'm not going to wordsmith it even though I've written stuff on the paper here. I would just also observe that I've been accosted by several citizens in the city who say, what about me? What about us? We live in this house. We've been here for 40 years. Our kids have been out of school now for 30 of those 40 years. And my taxes cracked the 10,000 barrier last year, and I don't see it going anywhere but up. So I think that you're going to get a lot of pushback from people saying, what about us? And this document doesn't seem to address those. It just goes to, if you're a narrow band of people who are less fortunate than anyone sitting around this table. And I don't see us addressing that either. But the net result of not considering the people that live in this city that pay $10,000 or more, pick a number, $8,000, $10,000, at some point, they say it's unaffordable. And so when they leave, you know what's going to happen. And that's going to put increasingly more pressure on scarce dollars. The other point I want to make is that if you leverage affordable housing money, yeah, certainly the cap rate for creating housing right now is about 20, 22 percent, but it still goes against the amount of cash the city has available to bond. I mean, that's the practical reality of the market. So you can say 20K in affordable housing gets you 100K worth of affordable housing, but somebody has to pay that bond. Thank you.
Right. You had another point, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just, Craig, when you mentioned the, you know, if we have a dedicated 100 or 200-unit building, that would be going in a whole different direction, and that would be something, you know, we do have to pay the bond. Is that in here anywhere that we would aspire to having an affordable housing building?
Certainly.
I thought it was, but I can't find it.
No, we had a...
Like an aspirational...
Yeah, we had a reference.
74?
Yeah.
All right.
As well as standalone affordable properties.
I certainly know we talked about it as an option, you know, that...
Yeah.
Would be, because we have twice tried to do it.
Right.
It would be nice to try a third time, and hopefully, the outcome would be different.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments? Just happened to peruse the Virginia Town and, is it Cent? City? Is that what it is? Town and city?
Town?
Anyway, the municipal magazine for the state of Virginia, and I happened to see Count Z's. Yeah, you're in there, Dan. So, anyway, at page 24, if any of you are interested, I just happened to glance and see that's a familiar face. So congratulations, Dan. I imagine this has to do with environmental, your work in environmental quality, environmental sustainability. So I'll take a good look at that and advise anyone in the city to do so as well. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments on this policy at this time? All right.
Do we think, to make all those changes, do we think we need more time on that? Do you need some wordsmithing?
Would you like to work, help work on the wordsmithing?
You know, I love to wordsmith, but I hate to do someone else's job, but...
Well, and I also just wanted to point out that we're doing the comprehensive plan kind of at the same time. So some of these things may be addressed in the comprehensive plan as well.
Oh, is the Housing Commission working on the...
The housing staff.
Okay.
We're working on the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, updating that. So that would be another place to kind of address some of these issues.
When is that one supposed to be done?
Hopefully, in the next three or four months.
Do we want to put these hand in hand to come together? Or...
I think there are two separate documents. This one is based on affordable living and affordable housing, and the comprehensive plan is looking at housing as a whole, you know, housing for everyone.
Right.
And the goals for that, so...
I guess I view them as very much related.
Yeah. How do they inform each other? I'm sad to say I don't know that answer.
So this has been, this has been a big part of our discussion as we're considering, you know, how to proceed with this. But this is focused, this is focused just on policy relating to how we negotiate on ADUs, on how we will think about long-term planning for the use of the Affordable Housing Fund and that type of thing. So it's specific to that topic. As was noted, the comp plan is a much broader scope. And so this, I think there will be pieces of this that would be brought into the comprehensive plan because affordability is an important part of broad housing policy, but that is why this is different from that and why this moved ahead.
But if this is like a subset of the comp plan, is that, is this kind of a subset of the comp plan?
It's a standalone policy. I think the comp plan likely will reference it and...
Right.
Acknowledge that it exists and probably pull out some of the key points of it.
I just have to go back to the goals point.
Yeah.
So you need goals to know how much we should be negotiating for, right? So we don't know whether we're negotiating enough other than saying, well, we just want more. Well, what's our target? We know we want more, but should we be shooting for 200 units by a certain date, and therefore we know we need to negotiate this, you know, standalone building, or we need to get 7 percent in the next building? Like, I think without targets, you know, and knowing where we're going to go, the policy to kind of get us there doesn't seem to make much sense. Does that make sense?
Mr. Snyder?
Whatever his name is, yeah. I would be honored to be called Mr. Z. I'm not sure if you feel that way. So I want to express the very strong appreciation for the work that's done here. I think you've found a good balance here, and I would urge against sort of falling off that balance, either becoming more conservative or becoming significantly more aggressive. The other point, and I think Dan was starting to get to this, the case for affordable housing to somebody who's retired and is paying the $10,000 a year, or someone who's furloughed, how is it addressing affordability if my situation becomes less affordable in order to subsidize somebody else? And so at one point, the argument was made in the community that the schools only benefit the people with kids in the schools. And I think the newspaper led the way to say, oh, no, that's not the whole cycle. You have to recognize that the quality of schools supports things like housing prices and things like that. So if we're going to become more aggressive, and I think we should be careful about that, we need to make a stronger case to people why, other than a nice thing to do or other than it fits some general notion of what's in the common good, and I don't discount any of that, and I've supported affordable housing through the years in one way or another, we have to be careful that we're making the case to the broader community, particularly if we get more aggressive on the goals. So, which gets me back to, I think this is pretty aggressive. I think it does point the way. It does put us firmly on the side of affordable housing. So I would urge that we stay the course in a way that you have, I think, well and carefully laid out.
Could I? I'm trying to interpret what Mr. Z was talking about through the comp plan policy approach. I mean, this document still seems to me mostly about affordable housing. It in fact does seem about, you know, to put it very simply, taking money from someone... It in fact does seem about, you know, to put it very simply, taking money from someone in order to help someone who is less fortunate. That's just what it is, and that is something that we have had a hard time doing here. We've done it with some of the new developments. We've been a little bit more aggressive, but at the end of the day, we have real difficulty taking money from people who are here, people who are here now, and allocating it to people who cannot afford to live here now. That's why we do it with the new buildings, because, you know, we're taking money from people who don't live here yet. And so are we really doing anything with this policy to confront that and give ourselves targets to change that? And I don't know if I know the answer to that. And second to what Mr. Z said, is the comprehensive plan language really more about affordable living? In other words, does it speak to how we're trying to build a community where, you know, people of all generations can afford to live because, you know, we have walkable amenities so you don't have to own a second car, maybe not even a car at all. We have, you know, transit options that not only benefit mobility but also benefit the environment. And if, if that's what the comprehensive plan language is going to say, I think that's good. It addresses to some degree, I think, what has been said about people who are here now who feel like, you know, somebody's taken from their cookie jar to give to somebody else, but I'm not sure that this document can or needs to even speak to that. What this document to me needs to do is give this and future councils very specific numbers that it needs to hit every year, because if we don't, we'll wake up five years from now and we will be in worse shape than we are now, just as we are in worse shape than we were five years ago when it comes to affordability. So when we get around to doing the comprehensive plan language, does it address some of these concerns that, you know, the existing population has an ambivalence about their resources going to affordable housing?
So, I mean, I'm not sure we're going to totally resolve things in the next bit because we do have a pretty full agenda. Might I suggest that we try to take the comments you've heard tonight, that the working group and staff working together to try to address them and refine the document to reflect the conversation this evening with the idea that we can potentially bring it back to another work session or a first reading, depending on how it looks like, how the kind of next version of the document looks.
Mr. Shields, is there a deadline when this needs to be done, or just you'd like to have it done so it's off your plate? Or is there a true, does it need to be done by a certain time?
Well, we would like to be able to dedicate our efforts to the comp plan amendment, and because this has had so much review and so much work put into it, I think there is a desire to wrap it up, but it should be right, and so we understand that. I would suggest that maybe we give a crack at taking the input tonight and get that draft back out to the City Council and keep it on the agenda for the ninth unless there's a desire to have it be taken off and with more work. But that, sort of, stay on our schedules is what we aspire to accomplish.
So it's on for the ninth?
I'm sorry, I said the ninth, the fourteenth.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we at least have that goal, and then we'll figure out where it takes us?
Okay.
All right, listen, thank you all very much. We're getting there. We're just going out of the finish line, and hopefully we'll be there saying, "We appreciate your patience and your continued efforts," and let's move on to our next item. All right, thank you again. Our next item is citywide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. We've got Mr. Tim Stevens, and while we're doing that, I'm going to pass this on to Mr. Z, which also talks about environmental sustainability and the like.
Listen, if you'd like me to autograph and hand it back to you, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, welcome. Thank you. Thank you all.
Good evening, council members. I'm presenting on behalf of the Energy Transition Subcommittee this evening. That's a subcommittee of the Environmental Sustainability Council, and I'm joined by Maya Davis, who's a senior environmental planner with the Metropolitan Council of Governments. So we have a presentation this evening, and I think Ms. Mester is queuing up the...
What did you guys say?
Watch my hands, I guess, not my lips.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, Council has copies.
Should I just proceed?
Going.
Okay. All right, well, the purpose of this presentation is to share results of greenhouse gas emissions study that we've been working on steadily. It's been five years since we've spoken to you, so we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So greenhouse gas emissions are the result of utilizing energy that is sourced from fossil fuels. When it's released into the atmosphere, it has a global warming effect, and so that's a huge issue, not just for Fols Church, obviously, but for the entire globe. So the next slide gives a little bit of the background. There's a couple of resolutions that the City Council has passed in the past that guide our work on this subject. The first one was passed in two thousand and eight, and that committed the council to measure, track, and reduce our citywide emissions, and that was followed in two thousand and seventeen with another resolution that established very specific targets that the city would endeavor to achieve in terms of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. That's a twenty percent reduction by two thousand and twenty and an eighty percent reduction by two thousand and fifty. That's below two thousand and five as a base year. So this presentation is in fulfillment of both of those resolutions. So we can move on to the next slide. So we have been working on greenhouse gas inventory ever since two thousand and eight, but at that time, it was pretty much an amateur event. We had several citizen activists, volunteers. We worked with a few of the city staff, but it was, we were one of the first jurisdictions to try to undertake this, and the protocols were not well-understood at that point. We suffered a bit of a setback in two thousand and twelve as we lost the city staff who were working on this to Fairfax Water, which was part of the sale of the water utility in the city. Fortunately, in two thousand and sixteen, Metropolitan Council of Government said, "Well, we can do this." And so from that point on, they've done greenhouse gas inventories, not only for the region as a whole, but all of the twenty-four separate jurisdictions in our region. So that has been especially helpful. They bring professional staff to this effort, and we have results for two thousand and five, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and fifteen. So I'll share those results this evening. Even though the Council of Governments does the inventory, we still collaborate with them on an ongoing basis since we have the knowledge of specific issues that occur here in the city that need to be taken into account. So we can move to the next. So here are the results, and I'll just point out that the unit of measurement is that MT CO2E. That's carbon dioxide, metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. And basically what that means is you take all the different sources of greenhouse gas emissions, the major one of which is carbon dioxide, but there are others as well, such as methane, CFCs, HFCs, and those are all converted into the same unit, which is that MT CO2E. And so all the numbers that you see on this chart then are all kind of uniform around that one metric. We're able to derive greenhouse gas emissions for the key sectors in the city. That's our buildings, both residential and commercial, transportation, and that includes emissions from all of the vehicles, including the cut-through vehicles that go through the city. We're responsible for the emissions for anything that occurs in our boundaries. And then finally, there's a catch-all category that covers such things as storm, as wastewater and solid waste. So that's a rather small component. So you can see that those are summed up on that column under total on the right-hand side, and for two thousand and five, we had a little over a hundred and fifty-five thousand tons of carbon dioxide emissions in the city. That's for everything that can be measured in the city. Went down a little bit in two thousand and twelve, you can see, and then back up unfortunately a little bit in two thousand and fifteen. But basically, you can say that we've been leveled for our emissions over the last couple of years. Now, I mentioned that the one resolution in two thousand and seventeen established some very specific targets, and so I've put those targets there. We would need to get down to approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand tons in two thousand and twenty. That's not very far from now. And then the big reduction is eighty percent reduction by two thousand and fifty, and we would have to get down to approximately thirty thousand tons of emissions at that point. So we have a long ways to go, but we're not alone. I'm afraid just about every level, we're kind of falling short of the targets that we need to get according to climate scientists. You can see on the graph below the numbers that that kind of shows that we've been steady for a couple of years historically, and then our targets would require that we have to have a rather steep reduction. So we can go to the next chart. One of the things that we're aware of, of course, is that our population is increasing, and so we have to take into account our emissions in light of that increasing population. And when we display the results on a per capita basis, you can see that it shows a rather sizable reduction. We go as much as a nineteen percent reduction in two thousand and fifteen below the two thousand and five numbers. So that indicates that we are making some progress. We have a lot of people moving into the city, and of course, that contributes to additional greenhouse gas emissions. I've also put the goals in terms of the per capita numbers, and you can see those as well. And the visual on this indicates that it looks better in terms of being on a trend line that would allow us to get to our goals by two thousand and fifty, but like I say, we still have a ways to go. So the next chart. So the, kind of the bottom line here is our missions have reduced two percent in total from two thousand and five to two thousand and fifteen. On a per capita basis, they've declined nineteen percent. A couple of things that have contributed to that, probably the biggest contributor, is the fact that our utilities have converted a lot of their fuel from coal to natural gas, and at the point of combustion, that is a cleaner source of energy. Now, behind that, getting to that, there's a whole lot of issues that are not accounted for in the greenhouse gas inventory, but that's a separate discussion. The other thing that's helped with reducing our greenhouse gas emissions are the reduced emissions from the transportation sector. It's referred to as our fleet. That's basically just all the cars and trucks that are out there. And what are known as the CAFE standards, these are the EPA standards that were implemented a few years ago that require higher efficiency amongst automobiles and cars. Those kicked in around two thousand and twelve, and you can see those results in terms of our transportation emissions going down. Now, the fact that the current administration has frozen those CAFE standards is a big source of concern because the benefit that we've been deriving from that is probably going to level out. The last bullet there refers to the regional results. As I mentioned earlier, the Council of Governments provides us the greenhouse gas emissions for the region as a whole, and on a per capita basis, the region reduced from fifteen-point-three tons down to twelve-point-three, and so that's about a twenty-two percent reduction on a per capita basis, and that's pretty close to the nineteen percent reduction that we experienced on a per capita basis. Now, total reductions for the region were larger than ours. It was about a nine percent reduction, and I think that mainly has to do with the fact that the district and Maryland have been much more aggressive in adopting statewide ordinances to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. Virginia's a little bit slow. We're trying to catch up, but that shows in the numbers. Next slide, please. So in taking a look at those goals, it's, we're mindful of the fact that the majority of the policies that affect our emissions are actually not under our control. They're either under state control. An example of that would be building codes. Those are set at the state level, or emissions from power plants and fleets. Those are set by the EPA at the federal level. So those are out of our control. Things that are under our control, and I'll talk about a few of those in a minute, are nonetheless important. We still view it as important, you know, to do our bit, to do our share to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, even though, like I say, the policy for the most part are not things that we control. Next chart, please. So there have been things that we have been undertaking over the last several years. I'm sure you're familiar with several of these. We've been a long time on, one of the first participants in the EPA Green Power Community Program, and one of the things that that program requires is a certain percentage of our energy has to be from clean renewable sources. We do that through the purchase of what are called renewable energy certificates. And right now, those REXs, as we call them, can't be flowed through as a benefit or a reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions, but pretty soon, I'm told, that we will be able to do that, and so we'll see the benefit of that program in terms of an improvement to our greenhouse gas reductions. We've been a long time participant, participant in the solarize campaign, and we're now over twenty-five buildings in the city that have solar panels, that people have voluntarily, you know, put on their houses and businesses. One of the most important things we can do as a city has to do with land use, because that's something that we do control. And the more we point in the direction of transportation-oriented development and mixed-use development that gives our residents the ability to address most of the things that they need in life here locally, rather than getting into a car and driving someplace else, then that translates into reductions in our greenhouse gas emissions. And I know a lot of times we talk about the benefits of mixed-use development from a tax yield standpoint and other community benefits, but it's important to point out that it's good for the environment as well. It does result in lower greenhouse gas emissions. We have been very aggressive recently in negotiating higher lead requirements on the part of the developers, and that does translate also into reduced greenhouse gas emissions, so I'm certainly strongly encouraged that we continue to do that. And also, the city's undertaken some steps to reduce its energy efficiency. We've made some early conversions of our streetlights from the old incandescent style to LEDs, and that will save not only greenhouse gas emissions, but that will save us money as well. There's still quite a few streetlights yet to be converted, and I hope that we can take advantage of that. And so I have one more slide. So this is kind of a forward look on additional things that I think we can do to improve our situation regarding greenhouse gas emissions. The first thing is, we've talked about constructing a highly efficient school, and this is very important, and it's not finalized yet. The administration is still working with Gilbain to come out with a final comprehensive agreement, but everything we've heard so far indicates that they intend to build a very efficient school. That's demonstrated through a metric called energy use intensity. That's basically just the entire energy use divided by the square footage of the building, and right now, they are intending to achieve a twenty-two. That would be an extremely good result. Just by way of comparison, the existing high school is ninety-five. So here again, not only will a school like that result in lower greenhouse gas reductions, but it'll result in tax savings in terms of lower utility bills. So I would encourage all of you, when you talk to our colleagues on the school board and the school jurisdiction, that you encourage them to stay the course, that they make sure that they achieve this result for the building, and that there are a lot of community benefits if they're able to do that. Implement CPACE. That stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's a financing program that can be used by property owners to improve the energy efficiency and the renewable energy components of their buildings. It doesn't require any money out of the general fund. All the financing comes from independent capital providers. It's being pursued by many of our neighbors right now, and we have a good opportunity to pursue that as well. It may well be a big benefit to our ten acres of commercial development on the West End. Talk about implementation of solar energy on our buildings using what's called a power purchase agreement. You may have read here recently that Arlington County just signed an agreement for solar energy on five of their schools, and that was using a power purchase agreement. Interestingly enough, the company that they used to achieve that is the same company that's working with Gilbain on our high school, so that's very encouraging. We want to promote the use of electric vehicles. This is something that the committee, our committee, has looked at in much more detail here recently, and that would apply to school buses, our city fleet, as well as privately-owned vehicles. The more we can do to convert to electric vehicles, that will help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and as Kate Walker often makes sure to remind me, it will result in cleaner air and quieter streets as well. So there's a lot of benefits from electric vehicles. At the moment, we're working with a company called EVGO that wants to implement what are called fast charging stations, either the ones that can charge up a car in a half an hour as opposed to the overnight, which is traditionally what's been required. Again, this is no cost to the city if we're able to do this, so I'm hoping that we can, we can find a solution to that. Again... Again, I would point to mixed-use development as a key strategy, one that we control here in the city to reduce our emissions, and so very much support continuation of that. And then looking forward a little bit, there's a couple of things that we can do when time and resources are available. One is to engage the use of what's called energy performance contracting. This is where you have contractors come in, they'll point out savings that you can make in your buildings, and then they'll take a percentage of that savings rather than require a payment upfront. There's another possibility that we could join with our neighboring jurisdictions and invest in a solar farm. That's a bit more far-reaching. There's a lot of things that we have to still understand about that, but conceptually, it looks like a very good opportunity. And then finally, I mentioned that most of the policy actions that affect our emissions are not under our control. They're handled at the state and federal level. So that makes it very incumbent on us to support those proposed pieces of legislation that would in turn help us. There's one that you're going to consider in your next item, and that has to do with the city's legislative program. There's an item in there called Solar Freedom. Councilman Z is very familiar with this. He's been a lot of help in trying to promote this. This is simply a bill to remove obstacles in existing Virginia law that would make it easier for people to put up solar systems. And it applies to businesses, it applies to residents, and also city government. So this is just a short list. The Council of Governments has provided us a long list. Every three years, they update their Climate Energy Action Plan, and that gives us a lot of opportunities to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and we're very appreciative of that effort. And that ends my talk, and I'll just simply ask Maya, is there anything that you wanted to add to this, since you've been very instrumental in helping to perform our energy inventory?
Yeah, thank you, Tim, and thank you all. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, everyone, for inviting me. I just wanted to add a few short comments to Tim's very detailed presentation. Well, first of all, we just, at the end of this year, celebrated 10 years of climate action with our Climate Energy and Environment Policy Committee, and both Councilmember Z and Tim have been involved to one extent or the other since the very beginning. So, and Councilmember Z will be taking over chairmanship of our Climate Energy and Environment Policy Committee and providing some great leadership there in 2019. Just something I wanted to add was that this climate policy committee, as a group, decided to ask staff to make sure that all COG members were able to complete community-scale greenhouse gas inventories and to update those inventories moving forward so that we can track progress not just regionally, but at the local community scale as well. And so I want to stress that we use the most local, specific data possible. So we're not using regional scale numbers or national scale numbers for your community's inventory. It's your data. We get data from Dominion for your energy data. We get data about your wastewater treatment plants. We get solid waste data, and we collaborate very closely with your staff to make sure it's an accurate reflection of what's happening on the ground here in your community. So even though we do 24 inventories, we're, you know, want to make sure you know it's a locally-specific inventory for your community. And COG has served on the U.S. Community Protocols Steering Committee. This sort of guides how local communities in the U.S. should do these greenhouse gas inventories, and we're there to represent local government interests. And one of the things that Tim mentioned was of interest is sort of understanding how our local programs impact the inventory. And so we've been able to look at that in terms of like, better understanding through this group, that weather has had a big impact. Tim mentioned a slight uptick in 2015, but it was really a cold 2015, right? So when you consider things like weather, those things have an impact on your greenhouse gas inventory results. And we're working with this U.S. Community Protocol Group to look at your net impacts. So you all have a great tree canopy cover here. How much is that supporting greenhouse gas emission reductions here in your community? And you do have a lot of solar rec procurement in the community. How much is that impacting? So there isn't standardized methods yet, but we're working with national experts to standardize those methods, and so we can keep giving you a more accurate and clear picture of your inventories. Our Climate Policy Committee has asked us to do 2018 and 2020 inventories for all of our communities, including the City of Falls Church. So we'll be kicking that off soon here, now that 2018 is wrapped up, and we should have some draft results towards the end of this year to share with staff and continue to work with staff on that. As far as the actions are concerned, we will certainly continue to support local action as well as state and federal policies that support greenhouse gas emission reductions. We just had our Legislative Committee Call, and the group is looking forward to supporting the Solar Freedom Act here in Virginia that's moving forward. We have a newer initiative with the Northern Virginia Regional Commission on Streetlights, which Tim mentioned. And part of that is the effort to reduce rates for LED streetlight conversions, which we've had some success on here with Northern Virginia Regional Commission's lead. And the next part of it that's coming up this year is a cost-effectiveness tool for local governments to understand, okay, now you have these new rates, how cost-effective or not would it be to convert more fully to LED streetlights? So that could be a tool to support some efforts in that. And we'll continue to support PACE and exploring energy financing options for our local communities in 2019 as well. And I know that the 2020 and 2050 goal look pretty daunting. We don't anticipate, at this point in looking at the numbers, that we will, that the region as a whole will fully reach that 2020 goal. I think we'll get closer than we think we will. We do show that Virginia's electric grid is cleaning, and so you will see better numbers, more reductions in your next greenhouse gas inventory. And a study that we did, we finished a couple of years ago, kind of shows that long-term goal. We are already implementing measures to get ourselves a third of the way there. And we know how to get the next third of the way there, so we know how to get two-thirds of the way there. So we'll get there, and we have time, and in the meantime, we'll figure out that last third. So with that, I'll stop, and happy to help Tim answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you both for your efforts tonight and your contributions to this important issue over the past few years, or past years. Mr. Z, would you want to have first word maybe?
Be happy to do that. I want to thank Maya and Tim for coming forward tonight and present this well-thought-out and nuanced report. I'm glad to hear that we're doing probably as well as we can. We do know that obviously gets more difficult as time goes on, and regardless of how many electric cars we buy, that we do need to do more. And so, you know, what does it all mean that we have these little steps, and we work financing and individual action into all this? Globally, as the climate changes and weather events become more crazy, more unpredictable, we're going to see shifts that scientists, or as they're doing the modeling, will take place in the ocean currents, and as some areas slow down, some areas speed up, there will be this tremendous impact on our ability to get produce our food from the sea. But more importantly, the effect of the growth of phytoplankton, which by themselves now is responsible for over 80% of the absorption of carbon dioxide, releasing oxygen back into the air. Most of this stuff goes over people's heads because they go, well, you know, there's so much I can do, and yeah, I'm not really affected by this yet. Over the weekend, a piece of tuna sold for a record $1.3 million, and of course, that's being celebrated as, wow, isn't that wonderful? More?
3.1.
3.1, okay. Well, dyslexic, I guess. Whatever that number is, we're down to less than 4% of the stocks that they were as recently as five decades ago. And what that means is the top-level predator is running out of food that they can eat, and we're depleting the earth's resources in that regard. It makes all of us, I think, a bit more mindful about what we can do ourselves individually as a community to ensure that we promise a sustainable future for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership on this issue as well. Are there, there are some comments. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I thought this was excellent. I think based on the first topic we talked about, I think we know how much I like having measurable metrics and goals, and so I loved seeing the data on this. I'm sure that can be a whole separate discussion on how we actually collect that data, because that's probably really interesting. But if I understand it correctly, we had a target of 20% reduction by 2020, i.e. two years from now.
Below 2005.
But as of in the past 10 years, we've actually only reduced 2%.
Yeah.
On an absolute basis. So clearly, this seems like another crisis we've got going on in the region, right? So understand that a lot of the policies are really at the federal and state level, and we have issues there. Locally, I loved how you guys outlined a bunch of actions we can take. Do you all have a sense of, directionally, can we quantify how much those actions can help us? Just so that, I think to Dan's point, it'd be nice for people to know, like, gosh, if I do these things, I can help us get there, so they know that their actions actually go towards something. Do we have a sense of, out of those, yeah, that one?
Yeah. They vary quite a bit. In fact, the one that you see there about the solar farm, that could take up 100% of our emissions if we were to do that. Others probably have, you know, obviously, you know, far smaller. It depends, like, for example, on CPACE. How many businesses take up CPACE? We don't really know that now. It's such a new program. So they vary by each program. But I think the intent of your comment is correct. We should definitely focus on the ones that have the biggest bang for the buck, and we definitely would like to do that.
Yeah. I think it's really, it's sobering to kind of see the data, understand, you know, how much more opportunity we can have, but at the same time, being able to show the actions on the flip side, that's, hey, it's not hopeless. Here are things that we can do as a community, right?
That's a challenge.
That, to then inform, you know, policies that we make at the council level, too. So, thank you very much. I thought it was a terrific presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Tullington-House?
Yep, thank you. Tim, I thank you guys very much for what you do. I spend a lot of time traveling for my job, and I will tell you frankly, it's a bit frightening, in some cases appalling, at the inconsistencies of both here within the U.S. as well as abroad, how they treat concerns related to greenhouse gas, environmental sustainability. I'm not sure exactly at what point in my life, probably around when I first started having kids, that I turned the corner into being somewhat apathetic, to being a huge supporter of whatever we can do locally to improve our condition and the environment. And I understand that we are severely constrained in some cases at the federal and state level. But all this to say that it does make a difference, even the little things that we do. So what if we can continue to do here as a city? We should, and I fully support what you guys are doing. I think you're doing a great job, so keep fighting the good fight. And although Mr. Z typically carries the torch, anything that we can do to help you guys in your endeavor, and help us achieve these goals, or just even the small baby steps, to be able to try to even out the playing field from a greenhouse gas perspective or just from an environmental perspective, I certainly support you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, I really want to thank you for leading on all of this. I look at the highly efficient high school, and you have been on that, and you have been on that from the very beginning. So thank you for making sure that we're moving along the path to make that happen. I'm curious about electric vehicles. Does the city have any electric vehicles?
I think we've got one cart that's electric.
We have a cart.
We have a cart, and we have a few hybrids, like the police chief car had been. The electric charger that we had at City Hall is obviously not there right now, but we have gotten a grant through the VM settlement, VW settlement, and we'll have eight EV chargers at City Hall, two in the front and the rest in the back when we reopen.
On the vehicles, my understanding is we got stimulus money a number of years ago, and we use that to buy hybrids. And so as long as those are still functioning, it's kind of not timely to change those out yet, but obviously, when the time comes, some of us will be encouraging.
Right. So as vehicles turn over, it'd be interesting, I mean, you know, what's the balance on the cost of those versus the energy efficiency of them? And then also, school buses. I didn't know there were electric school buses.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think we have any of those, do we?
We don't. There are no American firms, but there's a Canadian firm by the name of E. Lion that actually gave a demonstration here a couple of years ago. At that point, they were still too expensive. They were twice the cost of a diesel bus, but that cost keeps coming down. And there are a lot of other benefits as well. The maintenance is less, obviously, it costs less to fuel the vehicles, and the air is cleaner. So their time is coming, it's just a matter of when.
So we can trust you to keep an eye on that and let us know?
I will do my best.
Thank you.
With the help of.
I would mention that the Council of Governments currently has a cooperative contract for alternative fuel vehicles. So there's CNG and propane utility type and pickup-type vehicles, and there's also electric vehicles that are a part of that to give local governments a discounted rate. And that contract should continue to be available for the next at least three to five years, if not renewed longer. So when you're ready, there is a contract vehicle in place that makes it more convenient for you all.
Are there electric golf carts in our future?
I thought they were always electric.
Well, I mean, super-duper, you know, modern conveyances that would, you know, enable, I don't know, law enforcement or staff or whatever, or even citizens to get around.
My understanding, Mr. Snyder is a big fan of.
Right. And I know they exist in certain Colonial Beach and resort communities and so forth, but it's always struck me how many trips I personally take that are less than a mile and, you know, in good weather, could just as well be taken with a less space-consuming electric vehicle. Anyway, that's just another thing to add to here. Keep an eye on that list. Fortunately, it's an area that I don't have to say much about that'll make everybody happy, because Mr. Z and Mr. Stevens do such a very fine job at it. I just want to commend Tim particularly for his role in broadening the definition of what it means to be an environmentalist here in the city. You know, typically, the focus was on recycling and tree canopy and parks, and those are necessary and important things, but they're, as we, you know, live and move forward, not sufficient. We need to do more and find more levers we can pull, and it is helpful, as Ms. Hardy said, to have a list of things that we can choose from. Let's try this, let's try that. That is exactly the kind of thing that I think on the housing issue, you know, we would like to see, you know? It's a difficult, challenging problem, but there are things that other communities are doing, and, you know, if we were just a little better informed about them, perhaps, some of them would apply to here. So thank you for, in your area, bringing those all to our attention.
All right. Well, listen, thank you all. I, for one, think you've made some great progress, the city has as a whole, in the past few years. I mean, going from, you know, school additions that aren't lead anything to something maybe that might be net zero already, and the lead standards that we've raised in the past few years, I think we've done some pretty good things, but certainly, there's more to do. So thank you for help leading us in the right direction.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. All right, let's move on to our next slide on the legislative program. Ms. Mester, are you going to run that part of the presentation?
Certainly. And I'll bring up the staff report if we need it. Just a few logistical highlights I'd like to provide, and then touch base on a few points in the Ledge program, and mostly defer for any comments or revisions you'd like before you adopt this next Monday. The Ledge program is scheduled to be adopted next Monday. The General Assembly will officially convene on the 9th, and adjourn February 23rd this year, with April being the reconvene session, depending on what's needed with budget and so forth. I put at your council seats this evening a list from the General Assembly listserv of just the main bills that Saslow and Simon have patroned or co-patroned, just so you can get a sense of all the bills that have been filed to date. There's quite a few more still to be uploaded, but you'll see that many of them are related to the council's legislative initiatives and positions. Senator Saslow and Delegate Simon will hold their annual Legislative Town Hall meeting on January 12th, this Saturday. I want to highlight that due to the construction and parking right here, they've elected to go to the high schools. So I wanted to flag. We've been messaging the different location, but they'll be at George Mason this year at 10 o'clock, so that you can participate in that. January 24th is VML's Legislative Day, and three council members are registered so far to attend, so I look forward to doing that with you all this year. And to speak to some of the legislative program, I've included in the packet that was put on the website and for your copy, all of the attachments, so that... for your copy, all of the attachments, so that nobody needs to look for them. They're all here, although, of course, a lot are V M Ls and our, our transportation partners. You did receive input from your electoral board, the school board, the Environmental Sustainability Council, and the Library Board of Trustees. And so those are also included in your packet. For all of those boards and commissions and regional entities, I've included them as reference, so that you would be adopting all those positions. Of course, V M L Council had a great contingency and delegation at the conference when that was adopted in October. So you've been very involved in the V M L. And then Mr. Snyder's been very involved in M B T C and M B T A as we work on those issues. That's also a regional position. So you'll see I've categorized the regional positions where all the Northern Virginia jurisdictions have agreed to those same statements for greater strength. And those are very important around Womata and transportation and transit funding. The council this year also requested some more focus on certain topics and some new items this year. So those are listed under priorities, starting at line 105 of your packet. That would be line, or page four. So again, reinforcing dangerous weapons, enhancing that a bit more. And you'll see in the list that Senator Sasso and Delegate Simon have, there's a lot of gun-related legislation that they've patroned or co-patroned. And just before the council meeting, I sent out a link to a Washington Post article with the governor's initiatives and legislation that he requested be patroned related to gun control as well. Focus on pedestrian safety, and then quite a bit, starting on line 149, with a focus on rights and human resources for maybe our more at-risk community members. So you'll see fair housing, the Medicaid waiver advocacy we've been doing to try to make sure we have dedicated funding or waivers for the Miller House group home, the adoption of the, Virginia to adopt the equal rights constitutional amendment that's been pending for 46 years, and smoking in parks is another initiative. And then the last one that I will highlight, oh, and Medicaid waiver as expansion as well, as we've talked about, is the preliminary budget discussion with not as much state money and slower registration. There's a local budgetary impact. The last item I would highlight is on line 203. This one is a new one that came in just prior to me completing your packet for work session, and that is an issue of non-disclosure agreements that City of Manassas Park is pursuing, so that they can have non-disclosures with Treasurers and Commissioners' revenues to fully understand the revenue projections. And the mayor received requests from their mayor for support, and that actually went to all V M L members subsequently. I have put it in as support in this position and open for continuing dialogue. I think there is advantage from a staff perspective to have that information, but clearly retain it as confidential for the businesses. So the non-disclosure makes sense, so that as your CFO and city manager developing the budget, you can have a full impact of how one business could impact the city. I have been coordinating with the Treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue on those issues. It's always been a very important issue to maintain confidentiality. And Tom and Jody continue to be committed to working collaboratively, but their associations statewide have raised some concerns. So I just want to let you all know that while at a city manager and a governing body, there's a lot of support for it, there are some concerns being raised by the Constitutional Officers statewide associations. We've only just begun the dialogue locally on that. So with that, that's just a few highlights of a comprehensive legislative program. I hope I've captured the issues throughout the year that council has raised, but glad to do any refinements before your adoption next Monday.
All right. Thank you very much. As always, you do a great job representing the city down in Richmond. We appreciate all your work to that end. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Mastor? Mr. Snyder?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I wonder if it would be possible under the firearms to include specific endorsement of both the Sasso and Marcus Simon bills, to the extent that they deal with firearms. Secondly, in our program, do we specifically endorse the enactment of the E R? That's in both Sasso and Marcus Simon's groups. I want to make sure we do that. Finally, there was a bill which I saw described on W T O P. I haven't seen it yet, to restore the funds that were sort of redistributed
Transportation.
from other N V T A uses, namely, uses, I think, that we would take it to fund Metro. So, and the restoration of those funds might be important. So I'm wondering if we could just take a look at that bill to see if it's something we can endorse.
I will locate that and identify that. And also, I can be, we have general support of the firearms and the E R A bills, which I want to keep it general, but we can also add to the specific bills that you referenced. And Mayor, if I could, I neglected to highlight, we did include the school board's adopted legislative program, and that is one issue. Within that, there's one issue that the council was made aware of in terms of residencies for split lots. And so that bill is being endorsed here, and with city attorney and school attorneys' assistance, Simon has put in for a bill, and we're still refining that language. But that'll be something we'll track as well.
Thank you for a lot of great work, Cindy.
Mr. Duncan, and then Vice Mayor, and then?
Cindy, the reference you made to the email you sent about the Post article. So the bills that are listed there, are those overlap with anything that Marcus or Sasso have introduced, or are they otherwise mentioned in here? Or are they new things, I mean, not new, but are they things that we want to add? The extreme risk protective order, the bill requiring background checks on all gun sales, et cetera?
I haven't had a chance to cross-check that article against which ones
Okay.
they patroned or co-patroned. Your legislative program is intentionally written to be broad, so that any legislation that gets submitted that's consistent, we can speak to, because it's evolving. So while I would support adding some specific things from your own delegation, I wouldn't want to list every single bill. One, I haven't studied them all, but two, it'll evolve over the
Okay. I'm just, you know, I presume that the governor's listing them, they'll quickly become, you know, fairly important. So just want to make sure that everybody sees what bills they are, and if we have any concerns about any of them, that, that we raise those now, so that when we are advocating down there, we can be sure that we're all behind all of them. The only one I can see that's even, you know, is the one handgun a month law, which used to be on the books years ago, of course, and is now coming back into discussion. I'm not sure, I assume here that everybody would be in favor of that, but I'm not totally positive, so.
Most of them by title would be consistent, but I haven't had a chance to actually read the, the bills.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yes, on the Medicaid waiver, residency prioritization. Is that a bill that we're working on, or is that a staff solution?
I'm still working with Senator Sasso, and I have a message into his legislative aide for an update. He was working both sort of a bill strategy and/or a budget strategy, the budget being the more likely to dedicate funding or get additional
Okay.
waiver funding. So
Okay.
specific solution not resolved yet, which is why I've written it broadly enough that I can support which way of a way Sasso proceeds and recommends based on your direction.
Okay. And I will echo everyone else's thanks for doing all of this. This is a huge amount of work and knowledge that you have in your head, that you put on paper. So thank you very much for leading the way here.
All right, Ms. Hardy, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say thank you to Cindy. It was very comprehensive, so I appreciate it.
All right. Any other comments? Anyone else wish to thank Cindy?
I also wish to thank Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
And also to ask that we not lose attention, since this is a very short session, all bills have to be in by January the 14th, and the session's supposed to conclude by February the 22nd. It's a lightning round. That Virginia can be the 38th state, the last state necessary to prove the, ratify the E R A. As you all agree with all the sentiments expressed, that now is the time to do this.
All right, here, here. Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate all your fine work and look forward to working some more with you.
My honor to support you all.
All right. Our next item is the F Y 19 budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, and members of the council. We have for you the second round of budget amendments for the current fiscal year 19. The first one was in fall, October. This round includes a request of appropriation of roughly 812,000 for general fund and 1.1 million in the C I P program. The general fund appropriations consist of multiple grants, the metro 3T bus. These are grants that we have been notified of since the last amendments, the maintenance for the bike share program. There's a grant in the Housing and Health Services Department. And off note is the appropriation request of 350,000 for the Big Chimney Park Improvements project. This will be, is being proposed to be funded by 235,000 from the sale of 201 West Bar seat received in fiscal year 2019, previously called mailboxes, et cetera, and 115,000 from the 2018 bond proceeds interest revenue that we have received. These are the bonds that were issued in June of 2018, the last round. And they are being drawn down, but not as rapidly, and are incurring, we're receiving, and the interests are, as you know, the market has been good. So we're receiving, we have had, we have a total of 270,000 on that as of December 31st. Typically, these are used, the interests are used for, either can be used for capital project cost itself, or to pay the debt service. And in the past, council has appropriated funds to pay debt service twice in 2012 and 13. And the big item in the C I P is a request for 700,000 in additional bond proceeds for the land acquisition project for the Fellow's properties located on Parker Avenue. And these are funds that would supplement the purchase price, as well as include closing costs and legal fees in that. And 75,000 in special transportation funds for the South Washington Planning Opportunity Program. And this is true up of the fiscal year 1718 funds that we received, the N V T A 30% that we are requesting to appropriate at this point. We will bring the first reading on January 14th council meeting, and the second reading of the ordinance on January 28th. That concludes my report and open for questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any questions or comments, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Ms. Bowa. I don't think there were any big surprises. I just a couple of questions. I noticed that part of the 3T restoration, which I think has been received very well by the community, I noticed in the staff report, it says that it's actually only two years. What happens after two years? Do we reevaluate the bus service? Do we have to get more money for it?
We would reevaluate it, and we would be eligible to apply for additional M B T C commuter choice 66 funds.
Just so that we don't have a lapse, because I know we heard from lots of people last time, maybe like a year in, we kind of do the evaluation so that we can decide to continue it or not, and then not have it, you know, go dead again.
Well, we're watching, of course, the, it's a competitive call for projects, and so Jeff Sykes is monitoring that specific grant program.
Great. The other was about the interest revenue that we're using to fund the overage with Big Chimneys, or at least part of the overage. I think, Ms. Bowa, you said it's 115,000, and we have 270 total so far, was that correct?
That's correct. Leaves us a balance of roughly 155.
Yeah. Do, is that something we need to make a decision on, or is it automatically go towards paying back debt service?
It is noted as part of the restricted fund balance that we show at the year-end reports. And if we will request to appropriate it, it'll come back to council for action.
So if we don't appropriate it, then it just sits there as?
Yeah. So if I may mention that there is a request that was approved by council for City Hall for 350,000. That was for the window, that's in the fiscal year 19 as part of the last year's C I P. That, that was not funded. So there is an interest income balance of 111,000 in the 213 bonds that funded the City Hall project, and this will leave a balance of 155. So we will be coming back to fund a portion of that 350 using these funds. So essentially, we will go for a lesser amount in the bond proceeds for that one.
Okay. I think I followed that. My question is, when we do all the modeling, do we account for the fact that we're not going to use the bonds right away, and therefore, we're going to have interest revenue available? Like, so by the fact that we're spending it for Big Chimneys and potentially for this old City Hall bond, does that impact anything? Like, have we accounted for the fact that we weren't going to use that money, or was it modeled to be used for offsetting debt service?
It typically, interest income is used to offset the debt service. We do not include it as part of a project funding. But as, in the recent history, since I've been here, we, if you recall, we had a funding for Mount Daniels for a little less than a million, but we went for 664,000 instead because of the time lag in the implementation of the project, and that earned enough interest to reduce the amount of bond proceeds that needed to be issued for that. So it's either used in paying the project or the debt service one way or the other.
Is it pretty?
And it comes to council for action, I mean, for every appropriation, so.
Is it pretty typical that we had to have 200, almost $300,000 in interest income available?
It's not that typical, but it's typical right now, because the interest rates are high, and, and
And we're bonding a lot.
Exactly. And, and we did an issuance of 23 million. It's higher than our typical amount. Our, our issuances have been like around the 10, 12 million range in the past. This is the higher one city, it funded all of City Hall, the park improvements, and then the school project as well, so.
Okay. And then the last question I had was around, I noticed in staff report, something about unspent money from the bus shelter project.
Mm-hmm.
And it was going to be reallocated to the South Washington project. Are we done with bus shelters? Have we completed? I think it was 38,000 in unspent money from the bus shelter project that was going to be reallocated to the South Washington project. Actually, several projects were going to go toward South Washington. Are we done with all the bus shelters?
For the 70% grant that we applied to M B T A, we are done with the bus shelters for every place we could get an easement. There were two places where we couldn't secure easements, so we're unable to put the bus shelters. Doesn't preclude future bus shelters or additional grants to M B T A, but for the specific grant that this was for, we're done. And therefore, the residual money, 70% would be eligible to go to this project, which has a shortfall.
Got it. So I know the South Washington long predates me, but I'd be interested in probably a separate time to talk about where that project stands, and how much over we are, or, you know, when there's an end date to the South Washington stuff.
We can do that as part of the C I P process, for sure. This specific money is the South Washington-South Maple intersection, which is found by Italian Cafe and Aurora House. And just with the geometry, excuse my voice, and the streetscape and crosswalks, it, the cost came in a little higher. But we can do the holistic project, because it actually has three phases and five different, six different funding sources.
Great. Okay. I'm glad we found money for Big Chimneys, because I know we heard loud and clear from the community that wanted to see that. So thank you.
All right. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate all your fine work.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be talking to you soon. All right, let's move on to our next item, which is the City Hall audiovisual contract.
So this item is before council with a request that it be added to your agenda for action next week at your meeting on January 14th. We have been using a contract that is a statewide contract for audiovisual equipment. So we're getting what we think are the statewide, very competitively priced equipment. And this would be for the cameras, the filming equipment, the microphones, the speakers, basically the full package for the courtroom slash council chambers and the Dogwood Room. The source of funding for this will be the PEG fees for the government side, not for the Cable Access Board, but for the government side, as well as other project funds for the City Hall project. So there not need to be any new appropriation of funds or a budget amendment for this. It's within the So there not need to be any new appropriation of funds or a budget amendment for this. It's within the project budget. And Cindy, you've been tracking this. Are there any other sort of key points on this that you would, you wouldn't want to make?
I would highlight, on the procurement side, we are compliant and we did, you'll notice, have to order some lead time equipment of just under a hundred thousand. This is the consolidation of both. So the dollar amount before you is the total. It's not this plus a hundred. For the specific equipment, the speakers and audio and microphones will be significantly improved as well as the video quality for the TV. It allows us to be HD and HD ready for broadcast. So website will be HD and, I'll have to put the cameras farther back. It will also allow us to do dual meetings live stream, so chambers and Dogwood could both be live streamed. So when the planning commission's in one room and councils in the other, the community could watch either one live and not have to wait for one to be recorded. And while we're getting a lot of new equipment that's outdated and sorely needs replacing, we are also preserving and reusing what we can. So we're being very cost effective. And this is a side note, here's an inside picture of chambers. This backside is the dais, so you can see the framing curve of the new dais looking out at chambers. That's actually Genevieve filming the video you all just watched. But along here, each council member will have a monitor. So you'll be able to close up, see the presentation, and then the community will have good large screens. And part of that is in this acquisition contract. It still needs the rest of the millwork, obviously, but we're making headway. There's your sockets.
So the requested contract is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we're expecting to expend. We're asking for an approval of that with a contingency for a total of two hundred and seventy-six thousand. As Ms. Mester noted, this is a contract that we really meant to bring to council in December, but we didn't get it to you in time. And given the lead time, we did make advance, we gave them the go ahead for ninety thousand dollars worth of work of preordering some of the equipment. And I just want the council to be aware of that. It was an unfortunate timing issue on our part.
So if we were not to approve this, who would have to pay for it?
If we were not approved, we'd need to huddle back and figure out what our strategy is.
So the equipment would.
You're going to get a real good sound system in your, in your den, Mayor.
We'd have one-third of the equipment needed for you to start up, so.
All right, thanks very much. Are there any questions or comments about what we've heard tonight? All right, well, thank you very much, and we will look forward to being posted about this. How about council schedule and any council requests? We do have a closed session tonight, so keep that in mind. Are there any council requests or council schedules?
Who goes first? Letty goes first.
Thank you. Next week, I was contacted by the elementary PTA. They would like to come and talk to us about their annual give day, their volunteer event on MLK Day. So just heads up for next week's calendar. Also, for the council, we do our annual service event on MLK Day, and so I wanted that to be noted on our calendar so everyone has it. It's looking, according to staff, like a late afternoon event at sunrise, so something with the seniors at sunrise around three o'clock, assuming that doesn't conflict with the march.
March the two, isn't it?
I thought I got noon.
Okay, well, they split the difference. All right, just do one.
I think it's assembling at noon and marching at one.
Okay. So you think we should be done by then?
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for organizing. All right, what else do we have schedule wise, Mr. Duncan?
Schedule wise or?
Or request wise?
The Department of Little Things on my list this week. The city attorney mentioned about the trash boxes along the, sorry, they used to be newspaper boxes, but now they are trash boxes that are empty along the main thoroughfares there at the intersection of Broad and Washington mostly. I took some more pictures today, and they are still empty except for the trash that's in them. I think they've just ceased to be used for their original purpose, so I'm hoping we could remove them. Upon the mayor's request at his last meeting that the downtown be swept, I noticed today that the sweeper was hard at work on the main sidewalk there. So congratulations to the mayor for making that happen. The Founder's Row Construction Management Plant still has not managed to find its way to my inbox after a good month of asking. So pleased to see activity at the construction trailer, and I just would love to see what's coming up there and when. And in conjunction with the march on Martin Luther King Day, I would love it if we could tame the vegetation at South Maple and Wallace Avenue. I understand there may be some dispute over whether the property owners should handle that or the city. And I understand that that's a complex issue, which might establish precedent. But it just seems that that side of town deserves a little more attention. I just really feel like if that look were almost anywhere else in town, it would not be tolerated. And so I would love by the twenty-first for that to be solved. And I brought up at the last mayor's meeting the question of the three T bus possibly being a conveyance for our schoolchildren, both to school and home in the afternoon. And if, if that would be possible to give the kids some sort of discount bus passes that would enable them to ride for free, it would increase ridership on the three T line and hopefully help us preserve it. And also would be good for the environment and make use of transit option that's there, that needs to be used more. And finally, just driving home last night from down in Tennessee, we sidetracked into Harrisonburg for a little bit and noticed that on their street poles, they have nice little snowflakes attached to their downtown street poles. Creates a festive look, not as involved perhaps as wrapping lights around all the trees. But in pursuit of Ms. Hardy's quest to, you know, light the entire, I do recall that some years ago, we did used to, I think, decorate our streetlight poles in some way. We used to wrap something around them. Anyway, I just wonder if, as we plan ahead for next year and the lighting, if we might look at whether we could do something with our street poles, streetlight poles, every other one even, that would create a festive holiday lighting look with less effort and trouble than wrapping every single tree with lights, which sometimes don't always work. Thank you.
Well, I can't top this snowflake effect, but nonetheless, I do have a list. And of course, having been away from you all for so long, it, you know, it's a short list. But the first one is, is there an effect of the shutdown on the city with regard to either grants or activities or help that we might expect from the feds? And you don't have to have the answer immediately. But if you get that answer and send that by email to all of council, I think we'd appreciate that, just in case someone asks us. We should appear to know what's going on. Second one is with regard to the efforts to mitigate for the loss of city staff. And it's actually on my list even before the latest events here. But there is one, so I'd like to have perhaps a one-to-one conversation about that. If anyone else wants to join me, they're welcome to. But in particular, the other ask is, comes from two boards of commissions to have a larger role in assessing replacements for solid waste and for stormwater, including meeting the top three candidates, whatever it turns out to be. So they would like to be part of that interview process. Also, I recall it was going to be a, in work session, a discussion of the solid waste contract. I see that's on for Monday. So I would like to be briefed on how we got to this, what's included, the effect of the change in the perspective on recycling, what's been the trend with regard to tipping fees, and how much we collect and so on. I'm sure you know all the questions I would want to ask. I don't have to lay them all out now. You can be sure that if you don't have the answers, that I'll ask you more questions. And let me know if there's an effect, if we don't approve it this coming Monday. So we'll schedule something. Then lastly, I would like to be briefed probably in one-to-one on where we are with regard to the city hall, where are we with regard to completion percentage, what remains to be done. And how do we count for the early projection of occupancy, which I think was originally going to be the end of two thousand eighteen and now looks like it's going to be close to the first, end of the first quarter. That, to me, coming from someone who's built a lot of stuff, means problems. So I'd like to probably talk to you and the city attorney about that. At your convenience, of course. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Mr. Shields, you want to?
Well, that's a lot. The, so sort of going backwards, we can certainly give a briefing on the city hall project. The original move-in date was mid-January. Substantial completion at the end of two thousand eighteen, and then we'd be moving in in the mid-January. We're looking to mid to late February now. So there is the delay, and we're still, you know, we're working with the contractor obviously every day and pushing them. But that, that was discussed about a month and a half ago. So we're, we're pretty much in line with where, where we were, just what we were describing at that time when we had the project team before the city council. But be happy to brief you in more detail. The solid waste contract, that is coming to council with a request for adoption. And Chris McGow is one of our staff who left, and on his last day is when they wrapped up their recommendation through the procurement process and the contract review team. The, the bottom line is, what they are recommending is that we stick with the current provider. There's a slightly lower cost, and there's an enhanced level of service. Those are kind of the, the three main points with it, and we'll discuss that in more detail. That, that group worked really hard through that procurement process and the intent is to bring that to council next week. I'm still getting caught up on sort of all the details of that contract myself and with the departure of staff. That has been a sort of an added level of difficulty with making sure that one of the most critical city services stays online and continues to deliver. The, in terms of the interview processes, I can follow up with council just on what those processes are and welcome input on that. And then lastly, on the closure of federal government, we're evaluating the impacts right now. One thing that we are experiencing is calls from citizens who are experiencing their, you know, being furloughed, delayed paychecks, and the financial difficulty that that is placing on our own citizens. And human services is, is getting those calls, as is the treasurer. So people who live in the city are being directly impacted by the closure right now. In terms of city business, we don't have any direct report, impacts that we can report right now. Most of our grants, and we do have a lot of federal transportation grants as an example, those all generally pass through state agencies. And so are interfaces with the state government on those, on those federal funds. But as, you know, if it continues, I think there will be more impacts. And it'll start to impact the state governments, which will then trickle down to impact us.
If there is something we need to do as council to ensure that our citizens are not adverse, too adversely impacted by the effect of the shutdown, please let us know. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
One question. When do we get a report on November twenty eighteen revenues? When will we have those numbers?
Well, our, our next report will be second quarter, and so that, that will be ending December thirty first. And so we typically get that report in late January, early February.
Okay. Be great, as a result of the, the Live Local proclamation. Just curious to know how that compares to previous year, if there was any meaningful impact. Hopefully, there was. And then working with the chamber on, on messaging about the impact of that. So eagerly awaiting those. Tom?
All right, anything else? Okay, Vice Mayor, either one.
Let's see. Mr. Shields and Ms. Mester, that was great video you had of city hall that was up on Facebook or Twitter the other day. So if anyone, if you haven't seen that, it gives a good update of where we are. My kids were listening across the room, and at one point you went, huh, and they were like, who is that on the video? You're getting the hang of it. Tomorrow night, the superintendent is presenting his proposed budget to the school board, just to make sure everyone's aware of that. At seven o'clock is the school board meeting. And a while back, I had asked for a, a budget of expenditures on the downtown plaza, and they haven't seen that yet, could, from the EDA. What have they spent on that plaza so far? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Noted that. I thought there was a town hall on the twentieth. Is that correct?
So we're, the Sunday series, we're moving to the fourth Sunday of the month, which actually used to be the, I think, the regular Sunday, the fourth Sunday. And so I don't know exactly what that date is. I think it must be the twenty-seventh.
There was an email that was sent out at two oh six that says, City Hall Fall Stretch Event Town Hall on one twenty. So just FYI, people might be getting some sort of email blast that there's a town hall on the twentieth.
All right.
All right, is there anything else, any other?
Our scheduled question is, are we attending the meeting on the fifteenth that the county is having about the Womata proposal and so forth?
Yes, we will be there.
And is the Simon Sass Law event Saturday here or up at the high school?
High school.
Auditorium?
I am not sure which room. They scheduled it directly. I'll have to confirm.
It's up at the high school. Ten o'clock, is that what it is?
All right, Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, in response to a request that we've seen that Steve, I wonder if we could begin to plan for some celebration of the improvement in human civil rights that we've seen since nineteen sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Some notice of that. We have a ways to go, but some significant recognitions of rights that weren't recognized before and rights to equality. Thank you.
All right, that sounds good. I think that was something we were probably going to talk about at the mayor's meeting agenda on Wednesday, but we'd certainly talk about it now. But I think we all got an email about celebrating and commemorating the Stonewall uprising, the fiftieth anniversary, I believe it's fifty years. Is there consensus that we take some action? I'll maybe look to staff to proclamation or something else we might plan for that, that day? All right, it sounds good. Well, so we'll.
My own view is we focus on the progress since then, not the event itself, but the progress since then, and commit ourselves to what additional progress we need to make. Thanks.
All right. Are there any other comments? We are, we do have a closed session for this evening, for later this evening, or I guess now, essentially. And so if we can, I'd like to maybe do a motion and then take a five-minute break to allow the cameras to come down and people to have a quick restroom stop, and then we'll go into closed session, should that be the desire of council. I'm going to go ahead and read a motion, upon a motion made by council member.
Connelly.
And seconded by council member.
Hardy.
And passed by vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A. Point three, discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the city, specifically discussion of the extension of a lease to the Fairfax Water Authority. And two, Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A twenty-nine, discussion of the award of a public contract and the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, specifically terms of contracts for the campus project. Councilor Connelly?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
No, and I'd like to explain why, Mr. Mayor, for one minute.
All right.
I believe the second part of this is I respectfully disagree with it. We've issued a public award to a particular contractor for development of a commercial area. I believe that all discussions regarding that should be conducted in open session, especially if the discussions suggest issues that might imply backsliding from commitments made to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilor Tarter, yes. All right, so we have a motion that's passed, six to one, let's take a five-minute break, and we will go into closed session. It passed by affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were held, was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session and meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connelly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Liptonhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right, is there anything else to be said tonight?
Mayor moves adjourned.
Second.